Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri, to be held Monday, September 21st, 2020, at 7:00 PM in the City Council chambers at 301 South Fifth Street, shall now come to order. Please rise for the invocation by Reverend Jack Dill Day of Kingdom News Broadcast and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you tonight. Father, we thank you, Father, for this day. We thank you for your blessings upon each one of us. Father, we ask, Lord, for your blessing to be upon this council, upon this meeting tonight. Father, we thank you for each council member, and we ask you, God, that it's your hand to be upon every item of interest, of discussion. Father, that your will will be done. Father, and we ask you, Lord, from our hearts, Lord, to bless Papa Bluff, Missouri. Father, we thank you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And thank you, Reverend Dill Day. Thank you. Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Parsons?
Here.
Councilwoman DeGaris?
Here.
Councilwoman Horton?
Here.
Councilwoman Cornman?
Here.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you, Clerk Young. Item five, disclosure of interest. Any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous Hearing none, we'll move to item six, citizens' input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the City Council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. I have Mr. Kenny Barker. Please state your name and address.
Kenny Barker, Papa Bluff, 1545 Linwood. Thank you for your time. What I want to talk to you about is about all these squatters in town. It seems like ever since we got this mental health deal over here on East Side, they keep them for a little bit, and then they turn them loose. Well, they turn loose on our streets. We have a lot of crime. They move in these old houses that are abandoned houses. They strip the wires out, they strip the copper out, and then they usually burn the house and leave. And, you know, that's about what happened down on Bethel Street here a few days ago. You know, that's becoming a big problem. They're riding around on bicycles all night long. These streets come alive at dark. If you guys ride around at dark time, they come alive. I mean, there's people walking up and down the road, everything. What do you think they're doing? They're stealing. But, and also, another thing, too, is like the sidewalks in town, Mrs. Cheshire talked on this here last time he was here. Man, these sidewalks are bad. They're trip hazards. If you're a handicapped, you cannot get up and down them. I just had back surgery six weeks ago, and I know, I mean, I wouldn't even have thought about that six weeks ago, but now I think more about it. Little, little humps in the concrete. You can't even walk up and down them. And there's trees that are just all over the, walk down Park Street, they're just bushes just covering the sidewalks. They have to walk out in the road. I mean, why can't we get, you know, somebody out there to get these things cut down or make the landowner cut them down? And also about the grass in these yards. Man, this, this grass gets tall, and I know they give them tickets, but they just, they go on, you know, and nothing's ever done. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Item seven, consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the City Council. If any member of the City Council would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and considered separately, he or she may do so, may request to do so.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Item eight, workshop items for discussion. The City Council will discuss a presentation from Stifel Financial Corp. by Managing Director James Leahy regarding financing for the proposed police station building project. Mr. Leahy.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Jim Leahy. I'm with Stifel, Nicklaus &amp; Company in St. Louis. Had the pleasure of working with the city in the past on several of your financings, connection with projects that you've had, so I'm familiar with the city. I'm here this evening to talk about the financing in connection with the police facility. And I know sometimes, for those of you who maybe don't deal with financings like this all the time, it can be a bit confusing, and I wanted to just kind of go through it with you and explain it, and if you have any questions, I'd like to address those. So, so what we've been told, there were two handouts. I don't know if you have those available, but if you do, I'm going to go through those a little bit, and hopefully you'll have a better understanding when I'm finished. That's the goal at least. So, you have a project that we understand will, has a cost of 11.6 million, the police facilities, 11.6 million. I think you'll have bids later on to confirm those numbers, but for right now, we're working with that cost of 11.6 million. So to generate through a financing 11.6 million, you actually would issue, you might think of it as bonds, but in this case, they're called certificates of participation. And I'm going to explain what that is here in a second. But bonds, certificates of participation, pretty much the same thing. And I will tell you, Papa Bluff will not be the first city that has ever used certificates of participation to finance. This is not a, this is not a risky or a special idea for your, for your community. Cities throughout the entire United States use certificates of participation. They're a common tool to finance, you know, city halls, police facilities, essential facilities like that for communities. And so I'm going to explain the structure here in a second, but I'm going to go through the numbers with you to give you a sense of it. So you need 11.6 million for your project, and, but the total amount of certificates that would be issued would be 12 million, approximately, 12,885,000. So if I was you, the first question I would have is, what's the difference between those two numbers? Can you explain that? So let me, let me explain it. So 850,000 is a debt service reserve fund. So it's typically when communities issue bonds or certificates like this, there's a reserve fund. And that reserve is set aside, it's created with, with the issuance of the certificates. So you don't have to take it out of the city funds. It's, it's, it's created, okay? It's created with the issuance of the certificate. So purchasers give the city, in essence, $850,000. The remaining 435,000 are cost. There are costs associated with legal fees, trustee fees, underwriting fees, fees associated with actually doing the financing, okay? So if you would add up 11.6 million, 850,000, and 435,000, you'd get the number I mentioned before, 12,885,000. That's the amount of debt that the city would have to do their, do their project. I've talked to Matt, and I've talked to Mark Massingham, who previously was involved, about this, and this is not a decision that needs to be made this evening, or next week, or even a month from now. It's a decision that's made when we get closer to actually doing the financing. And that decision is, the interest, the interest and principal payment dates are typically every six months. So the existing city debt that's out there, your payment dates are typically March and September, okay? So in this, in this case, what we've contemplated is, interest would be paid every March, interest that's due on the outstanding certificates. Just think of it as your, as your home mortgage, works the same way. If you, if you owe, you know, $100,000, you'd, you'd pay interest, you know, on it, and then eventually you pay some of that in principal down. It works, it works the same way. It's really not that different. In the bond world, the certificates of participation world, there's two payment dates, as I said, March and September. So you'll have the flexibility, as we move forward, to decide when you want your first payment to be, okay? So we'll do this financing early next year in January. That's the plan. That's when you start needing the funds to do your project. So, so it could be that the first payment date would be September 1st of 2021. It's possible. You may say, we want to defer that. We'd like to make it 2022, March of 2022. You can do that. The longer you defer, the more interest you're paying. So keep that in mind. It's a trade-off. But for various reasons, budgeting issues or other issues that you have, those are decisions that will look to you to tell us what you'd prefer to do. And then you pay principal once a year. We've envisioned that occurring in September of each year, September 1st of each year. The certificates go out 25 years. They don't have to go out 25 years, but in this case, we've structured it to be 25 years because we're trying to keep your lease payments, or think of it as debt service payments, to approximately 850,000 per year. Hopefully it'll be a little less, that, that the, the interest rates, when we actually go out and sell the certificates, are a little bit less, and I'll tell you what interest rates we're contemplating right now. Interest rates, we're still at all-time lows. I know with COVID and, and with the, kind of the crazy world we've been in for the past six months, for sure, I understand, you probably wonder, what's the market like right now? The market's still very good, very, very good. Interest rates are low. Let me give you a sense of what we think the rates would be. And these are, these are, these are the yields on the certificates. And I can explain what I mean by that if you'd like me to, but, but, but let me give you a sense of what, what the yields would be. So think of it this way, the first certificate would mature in 2023, and then there's another one that matures in '24, '25, '26, all the way up to 2046. It's a series of maturities, okay? So the, the shorter certificates, the ones that only go out a year, just common sense, they would have the lowest interest rates. If you were, just put your investor hat on, if you were investing money, and you were buying these certificates as an investment, if you invested your money for one year, the rate would be lower. If you invested for 25 years, you'd expect a higher rate. And, and that's the way this works, same way, okay? So let me give you a sense of the yields. The yields in year one would be about 1.69%. These are tax exempt. And it keeps going up as we go longer out, 178, 189, 205, and on and on and on, and to the final maturity, the last one, is 383. That's today's market, okay? If we were to do this today, that's our best guess of what the, what, what, what the yields would be on these certificates. We could be wrong. You never really know until you go out and do it. But we're not just simply making it up. You might say, how'd you know this? How'd you come up with these numbers? Well, it's because other financings are going on right now. Our firm is pricing these school districts and all kinds of bonds and certificates every day. In fact, we price nine transactions today. We'll, we'll price about, you know, this week alone, we'll, we'll do about 45 of these around the country. So this isn't a, I don't want you to think it's just made up numbers. These are numbers based on things that we're seeing in the marketplace, and we have a pretty good confidence level that the, the interest rates, if the market, if we were doing this today, this is what the yields would be on the certificates, okay? Now, we've assumed something, and this is important, I want, I want you to hear this, I want you to know this. We've assumed that these certificates have a rating from one of the rating agencies. You've worked with Standard &amp; Poor's before. You've probably heard of Moody's, Standard &amp; Poor's, those are names that you might be familiar with. We would, we would talk to the rating agency, and we'd hopefully secure a rating on these certificates. The higher the rating, the lower the interest rates. So we've assumed a low investment-grade rating of triple B minus, okay? The highest you've probably heard is AAA. These are not going to be AAA. And that's not, don't take that personally. I mean, it's not, it's not bad. There are certificates like this rarely would have a AAA rating, okay? So don't, it's not bad. If we're able to secure an investment-grade rating, it might be slightly, slightly below investment-grade rating, these, these are the rates we think it would be, okay? So that gives you, gives you, gives you a sense of it. Goes out 25 years. You might ask me, well, those are, all those yields, 169 all the way up to 183, can you give me an average, what that, what that would be? That would probably be a question you might have. The average would be about 350, okay? So when you put all that, you might say, well, boy, that still seems on the high side, 169 versus 383. It's because more of the certificates are at the back end, okay? So more of the certificates have the, have the 320, the 363, the 383 interest, yields on them. So that's why, but the, on average, is 353. What we're trying to do is create level debt service, okay? So each year, your debt service payments are the same, and it doesn't go up. And as I said, as Matt's asked me before, when do we, when do we make these decisions? We make these decisions over the next couple of months, as we get closer to doing the financing. You have a better feel for exactly what the costs are. You have a feel for coming out of COVID, let's hope we're coming out of COVID. You have a better feel for how the sales taxes are coming into the city. I understand they've done pretty well, actually, your community's done pretty well with that, which is, congratulations, I'm really, I work with other cities that don't, can't say that, so I'm glad you're in that position, that that's the case. So that's, that's pretty much how that would work. I want to explain one other page to you, and I'll, I'm laughing a little bit because it's this page, if you have it, if you have it in front of you. Do you, do you see that? Mayor, do you see what I'm looking at? It's probably on your, on your pad there. It's got color, and it says their city, it's got cops, trustee, and the underwriter. Do you see that one? Thanks, Mayor. So, so, and you'll see a lot of arrows going every which way, and this probably gives you an instant headache when you look at it, but, but it's not really that complicated, okay? Let me explain. You've got three parties, the city, the trustee, and the underwriter, or purchaser of, purchaser of the certificates, three parties, right? And you've got three basic agreements, a lease agreement, a lease purchase agreement, and a trust. Anytime you issue bonds or certificates, there's a trust under indenture. And the trust just details all of the specifics of the financing. So really what's happening, all these arrows going back and forth, really, when the certificates are issued, the proceeds, you can see that arrow going from the green box down there at the bottom, payment of cops proceeds, goes right through to the trustee, to the city, okay? You see what I'm looking at? Do you have it, Mayor?
No, I know, but I'm, I'm.
So, so the, the $11.6 million is available to do your project. It goes to the city. Well then, how do the purchasers of these certificates get paid? Their principal and interest. Subject to annual appropriation, you take, you make lease payments, okay? And that's how the debt service is paid. You see it, see there, see where it says rental payments coming down from the city, subject to annual appropriation? You see that line right there, going to the trustee? And then eventually, the trustee then takes that money and pays principal and interest to the, to the purchasers of the certificates. That's really all this is. It looks complicated, it's not, okay? That's really what it is. It's a lease of the property, and, and that's essentially the way it works. There's a lot of documentation to prepare this. Gilmore &amp; Bell, who worked with you in the past, Shannon Creighton, Mark Grimm, Claire Halpern, they draft these documents. Takes about 90 days to do the financing, so we, we typically would start in October, and we conclude in January, because we've, it's our understanding that's when the, that's when the funds would, would be needed. And you'd spend those monies with your project over a couple of year period, a year and a half, two-year period. And that's the way, the debt service reserve fund, I want to make one other comment, the debt service reserve fund, the 850, no, the debt service reserve, I don't want to get that number wrong, the debt service reserve that we've contemplated in here is 800, yeah, was right, 850,000. It stays with the trustee, and then in the last payment, it's used to make the, help make the last payment, and it's invested by the trustee on your behalf. So that's essentially how it works, and I hope that, I hope that makes it a little bit easier to understand, I really do. I'm always available to answer any questions that you would have. I don't know what the process is tonight, if you want me to ask questions or answer questions or what, but.
If you don't mind, if some of them have questions.
Oh, no, happy to do it. Happy to, any questions anybody has, I'm glad to, glad to try and answer them.
Anyone from the council have questions?
You may not have them tonight, and I understand that, Mayor, you know, members of the council, but Matt knows how to get a hold of me. If any one of you have questions or would like to talk to me one-on-one, or, you know, whatever you'd like me to do, or come back to another meeting, I'm happy to do it. It's important to me, I've been doing this 31 years, it's important to me, it really is, for you, for you to understand this and, and be comfortable with it. I really want you to be. I don't want you to think, you know, here's this, you know, guy that does these financings all the time, kind of talks fast. I don't want you to think that. I really want you to, you know, always ask questions, always be comfortable with what you're doing. It's a big undertaking, and, and I want you to, I want you to make sure it's done to
So to move this on forward, to go on to the next steps, you know, kind of what, what, if the council felt, wanted to, you could move this on to the voting session at our next meeting, or however you want to proceed, if you have more questions, or, like you said, anything you would like to ask him. We've spent some time on the phone and exchanged quite a few emails over the last few weeks, so.
I'll make a motion that we move this to the next voting session.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. We will move this to our next voting session and see where we go from there, and I'm sure Matt will stay in touch with you.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I speak?
Uh, this.
On this subject?
I guess that's appropriate. Okay.
Jim Crisman, 464 North Main. And I'm confused, and I frequently am at council meetings, but what did, got moved to the next meeting?
To proceed with Mr. Leahy, the financing procedures, to take the next step in progress.
What, what, what action do you anticipate?
They'll either decide to move forward with, with seeking out funding, or they won't decide to move forward in seeking out funding.
Okay. I don't, I don't quite understand that, but there's.
Yeah, we have to have funding.
Yes, I.
Whether we build it there or wherever we do, we have to procure the funding.
I understand that, but it doesn't sound like there's a very definite proposal before the council. I mean, what, what are you really deciding on?
Yeah, just getting the money, just finding.
Okay. Just kind of an open question, we're gonna, we're gonna ask for a bucket full of money. Okay. You know, a few other questions need to be asked, and I don't think the council has talked about it that I have been here at, but how much can we afford for a police station? Has that question by itself ever come up? And the reason I ask that, I ran into Phil Crocker out at Cogger the other night, and Phil and I disagree on everything. But I asked Phil off the record, I said, what can we afford? And he said $8 million. Now, Phil's a number man. I disagree with him on, on most things, but if he's saying $8 million, it looks like that ought to be something that would, would be taken into consideration. I'm concerned with the capital budget. I have asked for the numbers there, a history of the last 10 years. It would be interesting, has anyone in the council looked at the last 10 years, where has the money been spent? You know, what, how much is needed for fire trucks and other things? What have we put off because we have, have had payments on the Coliseum? What have we not bought somewhere else? The, with some discussion outside tonight, I thought that the cost to build wouldn't be any more on Shelby Road than it would downtown because we're going to have to tear down downtown. Well, in fact, we're going to have to tear down downtown whether or not we build on Shelby Road. We've still got that expense. That's not something that we can just write off and say that these buildings that are sitting downtown are suddenly going to evaporate. I'm concerned with the capital budget. What are the specs for the police station? That's, you know, that's one thing that, that concerns me a little bit, and particularly on the fact that you're considering something next meeting. But what do, what are we buying? There's been nothing in the newspaper that, that I have heard or seen as far as what's in the police station, so it would seem that that would be appropriate. The Coliseum has been a drain, and I'm concerned that the police station's going to be a drain that we're going to look at for the next 25 years. What if the capital funding goes away? You know, that's, that's not impossible, the citizens of Papa Bluff would, would, would say, we don't like our capital funding. I didn't really plan on saying anything tonight, but just a couple of things came up, and I figured I'd better express them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. We will move on now to, to item B. The City Council will discuss locations for the proposed police station building. It is, it has come to my, my attention a little bit more here in recent weeks from people, folks from the commu, from the community, the voters, that, that they're in opposition to the police station being built outside of downtown. So we would like tonight to have a little dialogue on that. Once again, I know we've beat this horse around, and, and we really need to do something. So, and I've had, we've got several letters from people, I've had a number of phone calls, and I understand that some people don't get phone calls, but, but I get phone calls all the time, and I'm out in the community every day, and I talk to people. So at this time, I'll hear from any member of the council, and I think we had some folks from the audience that wanted to comment on this issue.
Well, Mayor, I would agree that this, this issue's been pretty well beat to death over the last several months, and even over, over a year, and we've finally made a decision, and it appears that, that we're working forward in this respect. It seems to me like some of the folks still believe maybe that we don't have a legitimate or a valid ordinance in place to move this project forward, and that is just not the case. And I'd like to ask our Counselor Richardson to elaborate on the status of our ordinances that are in place for the project on Shelby Road. Could you do that, Counselor Richardson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We have, in fact, on three separate ordinances and a resolution, established Shelby Road as the preferred site, the designated site for our police station. All of those ordinances, I think, have been shared with you tonight. They go back to November of 2019 and going forward. Both the selection of the site, the acquisition of the property, which has been litigated through the courts, all the way to the appellate court, and successfully sustained as within the power of the city. Subsequent ordinances, including the contract to buy the property, the financing, temporary financing of property, the selection of an architect to design a project on that site, all of. on that site, all of which I think are before you now. So, it is clearly established that previous councils have determined that the Shelby Road location is where the police station would be built. Now, that's not to say that this city council cannot change its mind. Believe me, since two thousand and thirteen, and for years before that, the city council has changed its mind, and that is well within your province if you choose to do that. We've been a long way down the river on this project. We've spent a ton of money on land acquisition, on architectural design and construction, consulting fees. I think the city manager can probably outline what that is. That's up to you, that's your province, not mine. All I'm saying is that from a legal point of view, this council, previous councils, has designated this site to be the police station. They had invested taxpayers' money in acquiring the property and in entering into contractual obligations with architects and other planners, uh, to go forward with this. And it'll be up to this council to decide whether or not you want to change your mind at this point, which is well within your province to do. But, uh, that'll be a decision that you all will have to make. I'll be happy to answer any questions on the gallows of it, if you have any.
Well, my problem is, uh, that the folks that I've talked to, uh, they feel that, that the council has gone against the will of the people. I mean, we had a number of people in on several occasions that were, were in opposition that wanted to keep it downtown, and, uh, they've told me that, and I've talked to a number of people, a, and, uh, they've told me, me that, that we don't listen to them, said, "We're, we're, we're just doing what we wanna do." I would like to think that we're doing everything for the best, best interest of the community, but the community does not feel that way at this time, the majority of the community. And I, I had some folks tonight that wanted to speak on this project one more time, and, uh, at this time, I would listen to, to the folks that had to speak.
I think some of the council may still wanna speak, mayor.
Excuse me?
Some of the council still may wanna speak before we go that route.
Okay, alright, well, let's let the council speak first, okay?
Do I wanna speak? Sure, I'll speak. Um, I've received letters and phone calls as well, and one of the big things is, is we can't even take care of Papa Bluff, of what we've got now. Why are we gonna go out and spend the money when we can't even take care of what we have? I mean, I'm new to all this, but I've drove around a lot, I've got a list of all the properties that the city owns, and, like, we have the old police station, where the old police station was, it's an eyesore to people. So, I'm, I'm just worried that when we go out and spend all this money, how are we gonna look in a few years? I'm all about moving forward and getting something established, but I don't know that spending eleven million dollars right now is the thing to do. That's just where I stand. And I have had a bunch of phone calls as well with opposition to it still, so.
Mayor, would it be permissible to speak again?
Sure.
And I wanted to address this to our city manager. I know that our capital fund project on the Coliseum, and additionally, there were some other things with that also, I believe, a library project, the golf course, and also maybe a police, uh, project there, but that debt service has been paid off, to my understanding, is that correct, since maybe twenty eighteen?
Last year.
Last year.
Yeah.
Which, it's also my understanding, over the past two or three years on that debt, that the city was paying approximately one point three million a year, which that having been paid off, that is no longer a money that we're having to pay out of capital fund.
Correct.
And, uh, prior to that, throughout most of the debt service, I believe, was approximately nine hundred thousand dollars a year, correct?
Yes.
So, uh, it's my understanding with this new project, we're looking at about eight hundred and fifty thousand approximately a year to pay that. So, we're not gonna be paying anything additionally. And also, I believe there's two half a million or, or five hun- two years of a five hundred thousand debt on a MODOD project that will be out of the way within the next couple of years.
That's correct, there's two payments left on that.
So, there's, to me, it's, it's, it's apparent that there's gonna be more breathing room there, uh, quite a bit more breathing room for us, uh, which is, is, is a consolation to me. Uh, you know, nobody likes to go in debt, but this, this project here is something, to my understanding, thing that has been talked about for decades, and we're still spinning around here, and we're still in the same place that we were, uh, since two thousand and thirteen. Uh, you know, I, I think we've gotta have some faith and confidence in the future of Papa Bluff, we're an economic hub here, and in spite of this virus, we're still holding pretty strong with some of our tax revenue, and if we weaken doubt all we want and set it to the side, or say, "This is not the time", but we may be doing that ten years from now and still not have a new police station or a city hall, and I don't want that myself personally. Well, just some of my thoughts.
I'm by no, no means opposed to a new police station or city hall, and I think our, our police department deserves the best state-of-the-art, uh, place to work, uh, but I just don't think that Shelby Road is the right place to put it. We, we purchased a piece of property downtown to help make the whole thing work, and we just abandoned the whole project downtown, and we've not gotten anything done to that old building downtown. Uh, so we need to do something with it.
I don't think the property is, has been abandoned. I mean, there's very much potential usefulness for that property, but, uh, it, it's been in, appears pretty much agreement that, uh, the police station would go out on Shelby and city hall would remain downtown, and I feel like that's pleased a lot of people.
But that's not the will of the community, from, from my perspective. Uh, I'll hear, yes, mayor?
I think everybody, or the majority of the people in this room, knows when we first started talking about a new police station, I wanted it downtown. So much so, I tried to give the citizens an opportunity to sign petitions, to get it on the ballot where they could decide where it would go, and you and Ed helped with that.
Mm-hmm.
We couldn't get a good enough response. We got a response, but not good enough. So, I mean, what, what else should we do? We've tried that, sir. You know, and when somebody asks me, "Well, I think the citizens should have an opportunity", I'll go, "You know, I felt that way too, and my family and my friends got out and worked those petitions, and we didn't get enough signatures." So, I'm not saying that they shouldn't have a say, but they didn't take an opportunity. And, you know, I thought the agreement was Shelby Road for the PD and city hall downtown, I thought that was a good thing. We could have one part in our historic area. And, you know, where were these people, Mr. Mayor, when we gave them the opportunity to get it on the ballot and pick out where they could have it?
We've got a few of them here tonight.
I would like to ask Chief Whitley and a couple of the captains, maybe a few detectives to come up. Chief, what I'd like to know, and just briefly, just tell us how long you've been with the fours, um, your rank?
I'm chief and it is twenty years in June.
Thank you.
Captain Darren Orby, twenty-three years in December.
Captain David Sutton, Department of Public Affairs, twenty-five and a half years.
Lieutenant Josh Stewart, Department of Public Affairs, in March, first of all.
Detective Corcoran, Metro twenty-six years.
Julie Wurdrick, I'm a detective, been there for ten years.
As a collective group, do you feel that the Shelby Road location is the ideal location?
Yes, yes, yes.
How many years are we looking at in experience here, combined, roughly?
Years of experience, combined.
At what point do we not take the professionals' opinion and run with it? These are the guys that work there every day, these are the guys that have to deal with the criminals every day. I think they know where the police station should be. I appreciate y'all coming up, thank you.
Thank you.
So, in other words, you're telling us that our voters are, are, are not capable of dis-
No, not that.
-anything? Are they dummies? Is that what you're saying?
No, of course not, of course not, but we did, we also need the, uh, the opinion of the professionals that do the job every day. We don't tell Bill Bach or anybody where to build substations. We need the opinions of the people who do the job.
And we need the, we need to listen to the community, to the people that vote and the people that are gonna pay for it. Yes, sir.
I, I don't want to discount any opinion or thoughts from any citizens in, in this community that has already spoken, is gonna speak, or in the future. That's important, but you're saying that we are not listening to the folks.
We're not.
That's, that's, that's a, that is a, a handful of folks.
That's not just.
Or a percentage, that, that does not necessarily mean that's the will of the whole community. And, and we, this is an elected representative body that was elected to, to try to do this on behalf of the citizens. We're not discounting what these folks have said in the past or tonight, but we have to do, is the, is the police officers, if, if they've recommended, we have to take a look at every aspect of this. We do, we should listen to our police chief as well.
And we need to listen to the folks that's paying for it, too.
Okay, and we've listened for months, but.
And did not do the will of the people.
That's, that is subjective.
Mayor, I'd like, I'd also like to add that if we weren't listening to the will of the people, we'd be, we would currently be looking at plans at a police station and a city hall sitting on Shelby Road, so we have listened to the people.
I have something to say.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I get calls, I work in the public every day also, I get calls, emails, texts, of people that are proud of what we're doing, that we're finally taking a step in getting this done, and they're thrilled with having it on Shelby Road. So, I don't know, I don't know how we figure percentages of who's had the most calls and all of that, the, the majority or, or not, but, uh, I think we're making a forward step for the present, not just the present of Papa Bluff, for the future. We've gotta look where we, we're growing, and we've gotta do what we think is best, and that's what, when I ran for this office, I, I wanted, that was one of my first things I wanted, was to have a new police station to be proud of, something in our community, that how important is it, everybody's talking about all the crime we're having, whatever, what a better way to have a way to service our community.
A new, a new building will not deter, will not deter crime.
I didn't say it, no, I didn't say it would, but there's things that, we need a new police station.
Sure we do, yeah.
But we don't know, I mean, everybody's, not everybody, ones are saying that the majority wants it all downtown. We don't know numbers, we don't know what numbers mean.
I don't know how you can determine that, that the majority does.
Well, I've got a couple of folks in the audience that would like to speak. Uh, Mr. Durbin?
Mayor Smith?
Oh, I'm sorry?
I've worked with every one of the officers that was up there, and they're all great officers and do a great job. And, you know, our police department deserves the best, well, more than we can afford to give them. Okay? And, uh, I wrote some stuff down here, and I'd like to go over just a little bit. In nineteen eighty-eight, city manager and city council at that time proposed to the citizens a set of needs: city hall, city council, chambers, police facilities and utilities, new police vehicles, police communications equipment, new fire department vehicles, and at least one new fire station, and rehabbing the other fire stations. The city had twenty-six miles of unpaved streets and many sidewalks to be repaired or replaced. They gave this to the citizens, and the citizens passed a half-cent sales tax, capital improvement tax, by sixty-seven percent with a ten-year sunset on it. And a lot of that stuff was done, some of the streets were taken care of, and some of the sidewalks, and the fire department, everything. They came up with the idea for the Coliseum, Ozark Golf Course changing from nine to eighteen holes, ten thousand square foot addition of the library, the veterans' row that has now over three thousand names on it from all of our service, armed services, but that sunset was about to run out, so they asked the citizens again to vote on it, and the citizens removed that ten-year sunset, so all this stuff could be taken care of. Now, the last several years, like I say, our, uh, bond payments or the payments on our money had gone up quite a bit, but it's been more than just the last few years that we've been in the red, using out our reserves. And I, like I say, I'd love to see a new police station, you know, anywhere, okay? I'd rather it be, in my opinion, I'd rather see it downtown with the city hall, where it's always been, that's where our town was founded, on the Papa Bluff, on the bluff of Black River, okay? But, uh, we just need to take care of some of the things we've got, like she mentioned, our old police station. How long have we been out of there now? Three years?
Almost five.
Five.
And it's still there, we've got some stuff done. And as far as the council, the council before we voted on this one to move everything out there and then switched to split it, that council voted unanimously to put both of them downtown, and that was overridden by a few council members changing. I don't think that's right, but that's the way the law is. I think if one council makes a unanimous decision, it ought to take at least a supermajority to override that, okay? Because you change council members, at least one, a chance of at least one every year, usually it's two and three at one time. And so, you know, the citizens have stepped up and done what they thought was right by providing this half-cent sales tax, capital improvement tax, to take care of the city. And I wouldn't see any problem in the, uh, you know, whichever way it comes out, we're gonna do our best to make it work, every one of us, whether we say it goes downtown, out north, police department, police department and city hall out there, split it, whatever, we're all gonna do our best to make it work. But like I say, I've received several calls, and I haven't heard of a single citizen that thinks the police department ought to be out there. I'd say the, you know, citizens have taken care of it by vote before, I wouldn't be against, uh, a motion, or somebody making a motion, or I could even make it, that it goes to a vote of the public at the next election, where it goes. I mean, the financing's gonna be there, it wouldn't hurt us, I hate that the police department's got a small deal, and I've heard people say we're wasting our money. We're not wasting our money there, we're providing them somewhere dry and safe to work out of, just like we're running somewhere for city hall.
Right. Except that we've got a million five hundred thousand invested in this project already.
If you can get that back.
Can I speak?
Yes.
I mean, that, the property, I think, is what everybody's thinking about, is the million of dollars that we've already spent, it's flat ground right there. I mean, somebody surely would think that, that if that's prime property for the police department, it'd be prime property for their business. Um, how far is the proposed property from outside the city limits? Do we know? Like what, 'cause I looked at a map and there's, I'm just curious on mileage from the police department to the city limit line.
Do you have any idea on that?
No, I don't, no, no.
Does anybody know?
Two hundred yards.
Exactly, I've got a map right here and it shows me. It's not very far from going outside the city limits. It's not very far from going outside the city limits. East side, south side feels like they're being abandoned. I could go on and on with calls that I've received, but businesses feel they're abandoned. And another thing with the money part of it, we have businesses leaving every day. Office Depot's now leaving. Two small businesses quit, yes, probably because of COVID. But that's tax revenue. What if... Whatever happens with Briggs and Stratton, what if that doesn't pan out? They filed for bankruptcy, they're for sale. What if whoever buys them decides to move them out of Poplar Bluff? That's a huge revenue for us. So I guess that's just my concern. I think about the money and also the people. I mean, I don't think we need to let them feel like they're being abandoned.
And they do feel as such. Right now, I will hear from someone from the audience, Mr. Durbin.
My name's Robert Durbin. I live sixteen oh nine North Thirteenth Street here in Poplar Bluff, Missouri. Originally, I opposed the Shelby Road purchase, and I made it quite clear, you know, but I'm gonna take the high road. We've got it now, so if ever mosquitoes become profitable, we've got the perfect place for it. Other than that, whenever I invest my money, I like to get the most I can get out of it. We've already got the property, you know, hopefully somebody else will make use of it. But as far as the placement of the police station, I've been given one reason for it being out on Shelby Road. I could give you thousands of reasons why it should be back downtown where it used to be. The investment in that property would improve the quality of life around that neighborhood. We have abandoned that. There's an old police officer statement about a broken window. If you leave a broken window, somebody else comes along, breaks another window, and sooner or later, they're all broken. That's pretty much what we've done to the old city hall and the police station down there. I've driven by there. There's debris all over the place, you know, the shingles have blown off, whatever. We're not doing anything with it. But if we took the money that we're investing in this police station and put it down there, if we invested money in that neighborhood, we would improve the quality of that neighborhood. We would improve Poplar Bluff in general, as opposed to what's happening out on Shelby Road. Okay, the retail is moving out on Shelby Road, but Poplar Bluff is still here. We are still here. I lived here for a long, long time. I've been in the same location for twenty-five years. There's no reason to move the police department to Shelby Road. I will debate with any of the guys that want to. You cannot give me an honest reason why Shelby Road is favorable over anyplace else in the city of Poplar Bluff. I would like to see it back in that same location, use the money to demolish what's there and rebuild a nice police station. I'm not opposed to giving the police department what they need to work. But let's make an investment... The Coliseum was sold to us on the idea that it would bring money into the city of Poplar Bluff. That did not happen. What kind of investment are we getting? What are we getting return for our investment if we put it down on Shelby Road, as opposed to putting it downtown? I'd welcome anybody. Nobody can give me a good reason why Shelby Road is worth more to us as opposed to downtown. Why are we just throwing our money away? Nobody? You're making these votes. You're making these decisions. You cannot debate the reason why you're making the decision? Give me one reason why Shelby Road is better location in downtown. Anybody? Then why are we throwing our money away? If nobody can give me an honest answer, why? Sell the property. Take that money and invest it in cleaning up our mess. Kenny was talking earlier about all the derelict buildings around town. The city of Poplar Bluff, if that was my house that looked like that, code enforcement would have it tore down. Exactly. Why are we imposing a different standard on the citizens of Poplar Bluff than we hold ourselves to? Why aren't we doing what we know is right and fixing what we've got, instead of going out here trying to put on a show? Who are we trying to impress? Guys, there was a stabbing last week. I was coming back from West Plains. I heard about it. I had the guy found. He was arrested within one hour. I was traveling. In my car, the location of the police department is not gonna make any difference to the problems that we have now. And because of one particular incident that we're framing it around, we've got problems now, all day, every day.
You have one minute, Mr. Durbin. You have one minute.
Guys, please make an honest, informed decision and put the police department back where it should be. Let's improve the quality of life for the people in that neighborhood, for the citizens of Poplar Bluff.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, come on up.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor and Council, and to address Mr. Crispin and that gentleman, anytime they want to come down, I've made the documented detail. If anybody wants to come and listen, while we believe the already purchased property on Shelby Road is absolutely the best location for the new PD. After several back-and-forth conversations with Mr. Tucker and City Manager Massingham, Mr. Tucker advised me that Mr. Lawrence is willing to sell this. Twenty-five percent of the appraised values since the police department deemed it the best location for strategic positioning. This is done after numerous hours in research of projected city growth, crime trends, threat assessments of an active shooter situation, and so forth. We must be proactive and not reactive in the situation of an idiot or a terrorist when they attack a school, a hospital, a retail business, and so forth. Response time saves lives, and that is a very relevant fact. If we're out there amongst them, we get there quicker. Most shootings happen in the day. That's when we have the most officers at the station or in town. We respond quickly, and the shooter will be terminated. We have wasted an excess of three hundred and thirty thousand dollars in rent alone for the PD. Our parking lot, communication center, in the five-plus years at the auto parts store converted into a makeshift police station. We could have rented a room at the Holiday Inn and been better off than what we've done there. I'll point out that police officers did all the work in converting the makeshift building into a minimal workable location, which saved the city thirty to forty thousand dollars in labor. The material alone is twenty-eight thousand. We're not getting any of that back. But the fact is, there are only two bathrooms for the whole department of our personnel, one of which must be used by the prisoners. We are not ADA compliant with them. We are not ADA compliant with the building entrances either. We do not have appropriate areas for processing and holding juveniles or females, and are possibly in violation of some DOJ mandates for total separation by sight and sound of those individuals. We have hundreds of thousands of dollars in vehicles, communications equipment, and firearms in an unsecured off-site location right now as we speak. We have evidence in three different locations, which is a nightmare situation from legal ramifications, both lively and criminally, if that evidence is compromised, if something happened to it. Our officers must put on hazmat equipment to retrieve old reports and case files from the old location at the hospital. It's obviously not a safe situation to expose our officers' health to. And, Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, I'm proud to say that Sheriff Mark Dobbs, PA Prosecutor Casey Proctor, Slug Hefner, Jim Bailey, Nathan Meyer, Francisco Escavell, Bishop Ron Webb, retired Deputy Chief Jeff Rollin, and Steve Halter all fully support our recommendation on Shelby Road. In closing, with many areas that could still be discussed, I will point out that our dispatch center has been off-site at TRC for five-plus years also. That is not conducive for effective working relationships with communication personnel and our officers. I'm asking you to not put this project in serious jeopardy and make it an additional two to four years down the road. In today's climate of defunding police in various jurisdictions, let's move forward and get this done. We've been discussing this for the last six, eight years, and I just think we need to move along and proceed with this thing. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Please state your name and address, sir.
Logan Gillum, Eighteleveth Foley Street. I'm here to talk about the police station they're wanting to build. The location does not matter where they put it at. There's no such thing as an economic hotspot in this town. This town is a huge eyesore. It is. They built the highway around it. They built Shelby Road to go around the center of it. Tell me who wants to come here? How are you gonna keep people here? If I got job offer, job out of this town, I'd probably leave. Crime rates are going up. A big shiny building on Shelby Road is not gonna stop it. Boots on the ground and their vehicles, that's their office. That's who's gonna get the job done, not this big building. And I believe I spoke to Mr. Wiley for about three and a half hours at the police station, asking about everything about the police station, and how many people's gonna be there in one time. I believe he said there was gonna be less than twenty people at one given time in this building that they're saying is gonna be twenty-seven thousand square foot. We're really gonna say we need twenty-seven thousand square foot? Has anybody questioned it? Has anybody said, "Do we really need this?" Or are we just asking... No offense, Mr. Wiley, or the rest of the police department, but has anybody questioned it?
This building may be, or another seventy-five years. Have you considered the growth of the town?
Okay. Now, here's my next question on this. Has anybody thought about the maintenance of this building? The payments or how it's gonna be maintenance? I mean, has that been accounted in for it, too, or are we gonna have a leak in roof like we did in downtown, and we're just gonna move to a different room when it starts breaking down? Has anybody thought about that? Has that been brought in?
Let's just stay on the location of it, please.
Sorry, sorry. I got off on tangent there. There's no reason to move it down to Shelby Road. There's absolutely none. The property was a bad buy to begin with. Shouldn't have been done. There's no reason for it. It's... It doesn't matter where you stick it at. You already have property in downtown. Just use it there. Why? Why would we need to put it on Shelby Road? It doesn't matter where you put it at. It's how many police officers are actually out working. That's your response time. They're not hanging out at the police station. Why would they be hanging out there? They don't just sit around there. They're out there patrolling the streets, driving their cars. That's what's gonna get the response time there. I mean, does that not make sense to anyone else? I don't believe all police officers are staying at the police station. Or do we want them to stay at the police station on Shelby Road, away from the rest of the town, and then when response comes in, is that what we want to happen? It doesn't make sense to me. And that's what it sounds like everybody's saying, well, the police station's gonna be a better response time to get police... That's where they're hanging out at? Is that what we want to say, the police officer at the station, or they're actually patrolling the streets? That's why I say move it to downtown, where we already have property. We already got demolished the building. There's still a parking garage there that can be used as well. Put the building there. And also, you said something about, I'm sorry, I'm going back. You had... You said that you put it to the citizens' decision on where you wanted to put the police station. How...
We proposed and had a petition. A certain number of people signed a petition. We could put it on the ballot. And we publicized it in various ways, and they... Not enough people signed it to get it on the ballot.
I never even heard of it.
Who's saying I never heard of it?
Me.
I never heard of it.
No one knew about it.
Well...
I mean...
Not everybody gets a paper. I mean, I'm not allowed to criticize that.
Yeah, sorry.
Go ahead, sir.
But that's just why I wanted to say, is that it doesn't matter where the police station goes. It just matters where the boots are on the ground and their patrol cars. That's their office, not the police building.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Captain Sutton.
Just a point of clarification. The response time matters in that the equipment is stored at the police department. We've got bunkers. We've got extra weapons. We've got less lethal shotguns, things like that. Tear gas, tactical-type things that we store at the police station, a secure facility. If we were to have to get them for something, it needs to be closer to where we might need to use them. The concern specific to active shooters, the area on Shelby Road is closer to the college, the hospital, the Poplar Bluff schools, places that we might need to get for, might anticipate an active shooter. The staffing that we would have at the police department, obviously, is not going to be the patrol officers. It's going to be administrative staff. It's going to be detectives, things like that. They would be the ones that would get the gear, get it to the site, instead of the officers having to detour from their response to go to the police department, pick up the equipment, and then go on to the site. And so, in a situation where we need that equipment, we need it as quickly as we can, and two minutes might make all the difference. We're talking about saving lives at that point. That's a fair point. The officers are... They're in their cars. That's their workstation. They're in the community. They're driving around in their zones. The police... Where the police department goes will have no effect on response time. So the residents on the east side will not get less service because the police department is on Shelby Road. The people that live in South End won't get any less service. The people that live on North Main won't get less service because that officer's still gonna be in his zone. He'll go to the police department, get in his car, and he'll go to his zone. He'll spend twelve hours in his zone. That's how we work. The location of the police department being central to where all the commercial district is, where the residential areas are, the schools, the hospital, things like that, the college, that's why the location's important. Second point of interest is that the parking garage cannot be used. It's been condemned. If we were to go back on Second Street, that structure would be... Need to be demolished, and we would need another parking structure built. And I'm sure that's gonna add a couple of million to the project if we did go back to Second Street. Is there any other questions about the location, the response times, the staffing?
Just one point. I think that parking garage, didn't we get an estimate where it's gonna be less to fix that than it was to tear it down?
Not that I'm aware of on that one. I know we did have a group that's looking at the downtown one on Broadway, but I have not gotten any cost estimates or had that looked at that I know of since I've been with the city.
My understanding was that the garage next to the police department, the engineers looked at it, said that it wasn't safe to park on and could not be repaired. That it's already been shimmed and supported by as many supports as we could.
There was a company that came in. I was down there, and after they just gave a rough estimate, I believe it was Mr. Massingham told me, "We can fix it cheaper than we can tear it down."
They didn't... They weren't able to come back.
Can you fix it and park on top of it, though? That's... That would be the concern. Because you'd have to be able to park on. We need that parking. That's... That location, the biggest problem we always... The struggle we always had was with parking. We were constantly parking in the library parking lot. The streets were full. We were parking in front of the sheriff's department, so it was... That was an ongoing struggle. We would need that parking structure.
Yeah, Mr. Durbin, have to be recognized. I'm... Any further discussion from the council or...
We got somebody coming up from... Just hold on. Mr. Crispin.
Hello, Councilman Mayor. Dave Williams, Chief Communication Operator, Poplar Bluff Police Department. I have one thing in mind when I put my headset on every single morning. And it's those guys standing back there, safety. A real close second as everybody's sitting in here is safety. We've gotta get them to you to get help. Now, when we talk about a location of whether it be downtown, whether it be on Shelby Road, as a communication officer for the last ten years and been in the communications for twenty years total, I look at things a little bit different. What's right down here in front of the sheriff's office, it's the Butler County Sheriff's Office. You know what our redundancy is? If our police department goes down, it's the sheriff's department. What's just down the hill from there of a major disaster? We have train tracks. We have hazmat, and at a minimum, usually on hazmat, it's a mile radius. So that shuts down the Poplar Bluff Police Department and the Sheriff's Department because they're next door to each other. My job is to open the lines of communications. When that nine-one-one phone rings and it doesn't answer, how are you gonna feel when that nine-one-one don't ring? Because they've evacuated our area. Two buildings within seventy-five, a hundred yards apart, they're gonna shut down both of them because of a hazmat incident. If a tornado come through, you know what's gonna happen? It's gonna take down both buildings. We've lost all communications. We can't help you unless we can respond, one way or the other. Whether it be kicking it over to the sheriff's department, or if the police department goes down, the sheriff's department calls us. down, the sheriff's department calls us. So, whenever we talk about the safety and where should the building go, here's your, where'd he go? Oh, he left. The answer is officer safety and the public safety. That's why should we, in my opinion, should build that on Shelby Road. We have the sheriff's department downtown. They assist us in things. It's not all about just the police department. It's about officer safety. It's about the public safety. When you go back and talk about, we're not doing what we start with the people. We're being safe with the people. We are sharing that safety with the people. We'll have a downtown law enforcement. We have a midsection law enforcement and we've got the highway patrol up north. Why wouldn't we want to spread it out? Why wouldn't we want all of our ducks in the same pond and then all of a sudden blows up and then you have no communication anywhere? And that's my job. If the phone goes down, the radio goes down, when you call 911 and nothing happens, what, what do you do? Who do you call? We don't call the sheriff's department because theirs is down too because they're right next door. When you, when we can't get out on our radios because we've knocked a tower down, downtown or whether it be out there, what do we do? There's got to be, in my opinion, some sort of separation between the two entities versus right on top of each other in case something would happen as a major incident. When I say this, Chief Wiley said earlier, in the event of a terrorist attack, we've got two buildings, there's the sheriff's department and there's the police department. Who's safe? Nobody in that incident. So, with our, as me as a communication operator, to keep those lines open, I, I can't see why you wouldn't build it on Shelby Road for this, for the simple fact of the safety of the citizens and the community of Papa Love and Butler County. I mean, I live 10 miles north of town in the county, but I still rely on law enforcement and 911 when I call. And if one goes down, hope to God the other one's available versus right next to each other. And like I said, I hope you guys make the right decision. We've put a lot of time and effort into this and I appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Christman, 464 North Main. Just a few comments. Steve, you were talking about money and how the money will be available after the Coliseum is paid for or the, now that the payment has been made here, but you're forgetting City Hall. You know, what's that going to do to our budget? That's several, several dollars more that we're talking about that needs to come, needs to happen.
I stand on the police department.
Okay. The, the specs on the police department, I haven't seen anything in the newspaper as far as what's in there. I don't know what ought to be in the police department.
Mr. Christman.
The, the location out there is also the farmland. That, that is a, that is a swampland out there. It's not going to be a housing development. It's not going to be a commercial development. It's underwater. The chief brought up the appraised value of the property. The appraised value, if anyone looks at it today, I don't think they would appraise it near what they do. And the last point that I'd like to make, and Barbara, you and Lisa have both mentioned it, but why don't we let the citizens vote on this? That's, that's really the bottom line. It's their money that's being spent. Let the citizens vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll hear from one more person from the audience and then we're going to have to move on.
Kenny Barker, Papa Love, 1545 Linwood, and I am 100% for a police station. 100%. I back you guys, everything I can do. Location is, is a problem to me. You know, it seems like, you know, we talked about a while ago, the building downtown, what are we going to do with it? Is it going to evaporate? We're still going to have to spend money on tearing it down. So if you build a police station out here, you're still going to have to spend the money tearing it down, even if you've got to tear down the, the parking garage. You're still going to have to spend that money. I mean, if it was my building, it, you said it was condemned. Well, the condemned place has got to be tore down. So, I would be getting a ticket every day, you know, for that. But the city's not getting that. Why don't we build it downtown? Because you guys are going to have to do something with that down there. And location, you know, he's talking about a hazmat deal. Man, what if an 18-wheeler comes through out there and, and crashes right in front of the police station? We've got a hazmat deal. Is, is there not going to be no tornadoes out there? Yeah, there's going to be tornadoes out there too. So there's tornadoes everywhere. So, you know, you can't just base it on a hazmat train or whatever. How many hazmat trains have we had wrecked in this town?
Kenny, I think what he was trying to, to say was when you have them close together, if you have an incident, then you have a problem. He's not saying that the incident would happen for sure. He's saying to be smart about it, to have them separated. Am I right about that, sir?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they could be separated. You know, there, there could be, there could be a discussion, separate them or not, does not separate them. But what if they're hand in hand? What if a, the sheriff's department arrests somebody and they take them over to the police jail? What if the police arrest somebody, take them over to the other jail? Well, you know, there they are. They're, they're right beside each other. You know, they're in the center hub. We talked about a while ago, the city councilman talked about the location. We're 200 yards from out of town. From, so whenever they got to go, they got to go everything north. How many miles is it from there to the north side of town? How many miles is from there to the east side of town or the south side of town? We're right on the edge of town. We're, we need to be in the center. So, if you're in the center, you can, your response time is faster. It's got to be faster. I mean, because if you're on one end of the town, what if you have a responsible here? Are you guys forgetting about east side, south side, north end? Put it downtown. Make the right decision. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to request to read this letter from the President of the Chamber of Commerce.
Oh, yeah, we've got, yeah, we've got this one.
Steve Halter gave us a letter. I was going to read to the public. He had some prior obligations, so he couldn't make it. To the Honorable Mayor Robert Smith and Papa Love City Council. First, thank you, thank you all for your hard work and dedication as a council person. Well, I appreciate how difficult your job is. I apologize that I cannot present this information in person. However, I am currently out of town. I am deeply concerned that the issue of the police department location continues to take up valuable city council and staff time. The issue has been resolved by past administration and council members through the resolution 1908 on November 4th, 2019, and ordinance 2014 bill 8214 on March 2nd, 2020. It is time to move on to other important issues in our city that needs attention, issues that impact taxpayers and our business community. Last year, there was incredible divide in our community concerning the location of City Hall and the police department. I had many business and community leaders along with potential downtown investors contact me about this issue. The large majority agreed that the best solution was a compromise to locate City Hall downtown and the police department on Shelby Road. The discussions revolved around the fact that the police department has not been downtown in five years and the experts, law enforcement officials, have the knowledge of information like threat assessments, crime statistics to make the best decision. I personally believe that the greatest potential threat which would involve an all-hands-on-deck scenario for law enforcement would be our high school or one of our two hospitals. The Shelby Road location would be the best location to handle those worst-case scenarios. Last fall, I personally met with the city manager and most of the city council and asked them to compromise on this issue so we can move forward as a community. They agreed to do so and went on to purchase the property on Shelby Road and have since spent over 500,000 towards preparation for the new police department. The land that was purchased was sold at a discounted rate solely based on the land being used as a new police department. That is ordinance 2014 bill 8214 passed on March the 2nd, 2020. It says, whereas the city of Papa Love has previously entered into a contract for the acquisition of real, real estate property along this Shelby Road and the construction of a new police station. We have a lot of positive momentum in our city, but it is time to move past this issue and to on to more pressing business. God bless. Steve Halter, Chamber President.
And on that note, may I read a letter I received from a business owner from right over the viaduct, Tim Funky. First, and let me reiterate, these are not my words at all. These are his. First, I want to go on record again as being the person who is much appreciative of our law enforcement personnel. I believe the city police in particular have done a very good job of making the best of a poor situation by operating out of a less than ideal facility. I believe a new facility will enhance the operations and probably help with the morale of the staff. I was both excited and disappointed when I heard the council was going to discuss the location of the new facility. Excited that we may be able to get the attention of the council, that citizens are in favor of downtown location, but disappointed that I was not going to be able to do it because of extenuating circumstances. I would still like the opportunity to let my thoughts be expressed. I believe that the city is best overall served by a new police facility that is not located in a general area of, that is located in a general area of downtown. I realize that a new police slash city hall facility in the downtown area is not going to bring back thriving retail environment there or revitalize our downtown. I do believe though, that it would be a part of the answer to some of the deterioration that is happening there. I find it to be highly hypocritical of the council to hire a downtown director and to pay the studies, for studies of how to revitalize downtown when the city will not spend their own dollars there. I have been very disappointed at the council representatives for the south and east wards have not stood up for the residents in these areas. These are two of the wards that have the most to lose by the police relocating out of, out on Shelby. I've been told that the major reason to relocate to Shelby is that they may have a better response time to some of our schools, not all, in case of a shooting. This is not a logical approach. School shootings are extremely rare and yes, you do need to have a playbook of what to do for that situation, but I'm, I am far more concerned about what happens every day in the city. We need to target the majority of our resources of what is the majority of the daily needs of our citizens. I am not fixated on a location being on Second Street. That is a good location, but there are other possibilities. Nitro Clinic, old hospital property is adding to our problem. I would think the council might be interested in seeing if there's a workable scenario in that property. There's plenty of land in the parcel to handle both police and city hall and we should not be ruling out other properties. I will quick, quickly mention that the city has been unable to pass the internet sales tax on four different occasions. Yet the Butler County Sheriff's Department just successfully passed a half-cent tax to help support their operation. Did anyone find that interesting dynamic? I actually thought that with recent unrest in our country with the internet tax, which the internet tax might have passed on an attempt, but it didn't. The Chamber of Commerce did a survey, survey on the preferred location of City Hall. I believe it was understood by most of the participants that the question included the police facility. After the results came back, which were clearly in favor of downtown location, the council chose to ignore the obvious and proceed with the Shelby for the police station. I have asked the chamber to do a second survey specifically asking about the location of the police station, but they have declined to do so without stating a reason for declining. And yes, I know they were respondents to the survey who do not live in the city, but they still have a vested interest. But it is unreasonable to construe that the city residents in the survey would have been grossly against a downtown location without those outside city were lopsided in favor of downtown. It would be more logical assumption that city residents would be more in favor of downtown location than non-residents. I am of the belief that the city took advantage of a very generous offer from a bank to purchase the property and the only decent thing to do is to allow the bank to repurchase the property at the same price. I do not believe it would be proper for the city to sell the property at a great profit to anyone else unless the bank clearly stated their approval of the transaction. In the interest of time, I will conclude by imploring the council to act on this issue in a manner that represents the wishes of the citizens. Sincerely, Tim Funky, 341 Woodland Hills Road.
One last thing I'd like to add.
Thank you.
I've got another letter here from a special agent with the ATF that talks about it. I'm not going to read the letter, but if anybody would like to take a look at it, they're more than welcome because I think we've kind of went on long enough. Thanks.
Is there any other discussion from the council? Do we have a motion to move, move this?
Mayor, could you clarify what you mean? What you mean when you say move this?
Move well.
Move to locate the police station downtown? Is that what you mean? To move this for voting session to relocate downtown? Is that what the motion is?
Yes.
With the information that I've received from citizens and some of the stuff that I've said about, you know, how the citizens have voted on things, the, like I said, I was on the council when it was voted unanimously to put them both downtown and this, and I've been on this council when it was voted to separate them. And that still didn't, I still get a lot of calls from citizens. I'd like to make the motion that we just move this to be put on the ballot for the citizens to decide in the next election.
Second. Can I second?
Yes. Can I ask for a roll call vote on that?
Is there any discussion?
Any, any discussion, further discussion on that? Please.
Councilwoman Parsons?
No.
Councilwoman DeGerris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
No.
Councilman Cornman?
No.
Councilwoman Taylor? Yes. Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
No.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Okay, the motion fails. Thank you. Item C. The city council will consider a petition for annexation for a property located at 145 Midnight Lane, Papa Love, Missouri. Petitioners Rick and Kathy Brittenham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yes, Rick and Kathy Brittenham have purchased this property on Midnight Lane and they are requesting a annexation. It's a residential property that they now, it's adjacent on a couple of sides to other property within the city of Papa Love.
A motion is to be moved to the voting session.
Second.
Calling for a public hearing.
Any, any further discussion?
Sorry, who's seconded? It was Barbara. Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item D. The city council will discuss the option of live-stream broadcast for the city council meetings. Mr. Winters.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a request had been made to the DAR asking for them to start broadcasting their, our city council meetings live via their Facebook account. City Clerk Nevada Young and I have done a little research and found that numerous cities in Missouri do live-stream their council meetings. I would recommend that instead of the DAR live-streaming our meetings, that we as a city add that viewing option for our residents. And discussions with our city's IT Director, Mr. Michael Pry, there are a couple of options for the city to live-stream council meetings. First would, would be to live-stream those to our city's Facebook account, which would allow only persons with a Facebook account to view the live-stream. Facebook, Facebook live-streams also have a lag between real-time and the video. A second option would be for the city to live-stream council meetings to YouTube Live. This option would allow anyone with internet access to view the live broadcast of the council meetings without requiring an additional social media account. And Ms. Young has found in her research that cities are pretty evenly split, split between Facebook Live and YouTube Live. But if, if the council does want to start live-streaming their council meetings, I would recommend that we do the YouTube. We are already putting a recorded, council meetings are posted to YouTube typically the next day, following meeting. So this would just be a process of, once the live-stream- the next day, following meeting, so this would just be a process of, once the live-stream is over, then our recorded meeting would be there.
I'll be back after this call.
Okay.
I do have a question.
I apologize.
Right now, though, publicly, the audience should not be live-streaming.
I'll let Mr. Richardson.
Mr. Richardson.
Answer that question. I think you may need to repeat it for him.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Should the public in the audience be live-streaming the meetings?
Chapter 610 of the Public Meeting Laws seems to pretty clearly say that live-streaming, both publishing and recording, should be made available to public. But it also makes it very clear in the same statute that the city council can control the methodology under which that happens. The reason for that exception is, has to do with quality of the recording or the pub, or the publishing, has to do with angles, has to do with the disruption of the normal course of business. So just as we have sometimes in our other state and federal in court system, the methodology for that publishing is clearly under the control of the city government. So for someone in the audience to undertake the publishing of a meeting should be controlled, and it should be controlled by you all. You clearly need to let the public have access to these public hearings, but you also clearly, for purposes of accuracy, audibility, and so forth, you should control the method in which that is transmitted. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. So if this council wants to go with YouTube, or Facebook, or a combination of the two, you clearly should do that under Chapter 610 of the Open Meetings Law. But you also clearly should control the manner in which that is transmitted, and you should also prohibit, as has actually been happening tonight as we sit here, someone, somewhere in the audience attempting to transmit the proceedings when those proceedings are, are not audible, and not visually discernible and so forth. So if you choose to do that, my recommendation to you is that you also, in addition to providing that publication and that recording, you should also control and restrict anyone else in the room from doing so. Does that answer the question?
Thank you.
Nevada, some clear, you said that these proceedings go on YouTube within 24 hours anyway?
Within 24 hours, we're required to put them.
Then we would have to have an investment of some sort, looks like $2,500 to carry them live, is that what you wrote here, Matt?
Matt may want to defer to that, but I believe we're talking between $2,500 to $3,500 to...
That's correct.
I mean, myself, I don't see what, I mean, if they're going to be on there the next day anyway, what the point of it is, but that's just an opinion.
Is it because people asked to do this?
The DAR was asked to do this.
Chris, did you have a comment?
So are we wanting to do both YouTube and Facebook? Or are you just proposing doing YouTube?
I am proposing doing YouTube.
Okay.
If we, and Michael can jump out from behind the camera if I say, if I'm incorrect in what I'm getting ready to say, but from our discussions with our IT Director, Michael Pry, it's, it's either one or the other, unless, of course, we double our investment and buy two cameras. So it's, it's one or, one or the other.
Okay, I get it.
And the DAR's, what was their comment as to the advantage of live, live-streaming on YouTube versus 24 hours later? What's the advantage?
That's not, that's not a discussion that I had with the DAR. They, they just called, they made the request, and I'm...
Did they make the request because somebody asked them to request us to do that?
I mean, I was told that you asked them to request it.
Me?
Yeah.
I didn't request that.
That's what I was told. Maybe I got bad.
No, sir, I guess so.
But I was ma, I was asked by the DAR to make it available for them to live-stream. And, and as Mr. Richardson said, yeah, I, people are seeing it anyway, whether they're watching it live right now on Channel 2 through our local cable, or whether they're going to want to go watch it on YouTube tomorrow, this would just be another avenue for us to broadcast it for the public to view. I'm sorry, Ms. Farley. I apologize.
I did not understand this conversation until today. I thought you were teasing.
No, really, I, so yeah, I misunderstood, so I misunderstood what Donna had said. Thank you for clarifying.
Well, I don't, manager, I don't think we should be difficult, but I concur with Councilman Cornman there. If they, if there's a, a sure advantage to, to live-streaming that on YouTube, if they can explain the advantage there, then it might be worthwhile, but otherwise, why invest that money?
I believe Mr. Durbin would like to speak, if that's, if the council would allow.
Okay, well, be brief.
Robert Durbin, 1609 North 13th Street. My only question was, YouTube or Facebook, either one, are we going to be interactive? Is, that would be?
No.
No, then there's no advantage to having live.
Other than making it available. I'm sorry, I answered for councilor, I apologize. My recommendation is for not to be interactive, just to be clear. That would, that also would be your decision to make.
It's just another form of transparency, but to people that can't get it on one or the other, I guess.
But they're getting it in 24 hours anyway, so it's transparent.
And it's live on local cable.
Yeah.
On top of that, so.
So if we, if the council chooses not to live-stream our council meetings, are there any requirements that we then allow an, an outside party to do that? Or can, do we still have control of that? Can you answer that?
I think the current status of the law under 610 is trending toward and favoring live-streaming. There is no trending toward interactive. That is a dangerous, horrible idea.
I believe Ms. Young would have a hard time keeping up with that and taking minutes at the same time.
That's why, by the way, at the same time, that the law does not allow city council members to sit at home and participate as elected officials in ongoing discussions and debates, votes and debates on the issue. So the idea of interactive is not contemplated, nor in my judgment will it ever be. However, I do think that we are trending in this age of technology toward live-streaming. And many of our fellow cities around the state are in fact live-streaming. The critical issue to me, although I, I think from a 610 point of view, live-streaming is the best way to go, but I also think that this council controlling who does the live-streaming is extremely critical.
May I say something?
Yes, please.
In my research, most cities that responded to my question do not have interactive abilities.
I can't think of any city in their right mind that would allow interactive. I'm not even sure that the law would allow it, since the law does not allow council members to sit at home and interactively communicate during meetings. They're sure as heck never going to mandate that it be done by the public.
So just to, just to be clear, to make sure, I want to understand, and I hope, maybe, maybe they have the same question I do, I don't know, but, so I go back to if we, if they, the city council chooses not to live-stream their council meetings, they still have control over their chambers and if they would allow any other person to broadcast it live-stream? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Failure to allow live-streaming even under your control may open you up to liability under 610, because I think that the, as I said before, the trending toward live-streaming with the coming technology is clearly where we're heading for. But the idea that this council can control who live-streams, and the quality and audibility and so forth, is well within your prerogative. But you may be ordered eventually in a court to allow live-streaming, you'll still maintain the ability to control who does the live-streaming.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
My comment was, from what I'm hearing from Councilman, or Council Richardson, is we need to set a policy or standards for whether we do it or whether we don't. We need to, to set rules, is that correct?
Yes, I, that is correct, Madam Clerk, I believe in view of the emerging technology that the council needs to take some action on what and who will be in control. And my personal advice is that we allow for live-streaming, whether we do live-streaming or YouTube or both, that's okay. A delay in the transmission of it is probably not going to eventually, with the emerging technologies, satisfy what the spirit and intent of Chapter 610 Public Meetings is all about. But clearly, we do need a policy that allows your security forces to shut down someone who may or may not be trying to live-stream something, either from the audience or from members of the, of the council. Does that answer the question?
Yes, thank you.
Counselor, could we set this for an additional workshop, which would allow time for the administration to work out a policy concerning the live-streaming, who does that and through what manner? I mean, at this point, there's no policy?
Yeah, I think so, and I think probably the proper motion to do so is to pass that to further workshop at the next meeting or whatever, and to instruct administration to come up with a proposal for your consideration at the next workshop meeting, whenever that is passed to.
Why make that motion?
Hold on, I had one more comment from Mr. Pry behind you there.
Just a, just a quick point, a couple of quick points. One, we are broadcasting live on Channel 2 through the cable system, and they're permitting us to do so, but I don't know that we've got a guarantee that that's always going to be that way. The cable system's changed hands like twice, and I think it's kind of a courtesy thing that they're doing, and if the new owners decide, well, we really don't want to do that anymore, we still need some sort of way of doing it alive, in a live fashion. The other point was, we've got a recording device that records the whole meeting that we upload. That is about seven years old, and we've had a few different problems with it. Still working, but there's no guarantee that's going to last much longer either. And our camera that we're using tonight is pretty, pretty aged. Still, still working, but we probably are looking at replacing some equipment in the near future anyway, so if we do, we might want to kill two birds with one stone. Just a couple of thoughts.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know, you know, if anybody's noticed, the television's sitting behind Ms. Parsons over there. I think it's in black and white still, I'm not sure, but yes, he is correct, there are several pieces of, of technology equipment that regardless of what we do as far as streaming goes, are going to have to be replaced in the near future anyway, so.
Okay. Any further discussion? Mayor Protim, you were about to lay out a motion?
I motion to set this for an additional workshop in order for the administration to develop a policy pertaining to live-streaming and who can do that and in what manner, and also the, well, he had mentioned, our manager had mentioned the cost of this additional equipment.
That be for the October 5th?
Sir?
That be for the October 5th meeting?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? This item will be on the October 5th discussion. Item for discussion, okay. Item E, the city council will consider authorizing the submission of a MODOT cost-share grant application for a portion of the Highway 67 I-57 project.
Give Barb just a second, Councilwoman Horton, just a second to get back in here now. While she, while she's coming, I just, you know, sometimes you're wrong and you have to admit that. I have to apologize to Donna Farley and to Chris Taylor, because I completely misunderstood what Donna said. It's the cell phones, we're going to blame it on cell phones, Donna, and the poor quality of service we get sometimes over our cell phones.
Let me read that one more time for Barbara, okay?
I am sorry, I was way out of here.
Okay, the city council will consider authorizing the submission of a MODOT cost-share grant application for a portion of Highway 67 I-57 project. Mr. Winters?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the Missouri Department of Transportation is currently accepting grant applications for their cross-share grant program. I'm asking for your approval to submit an application for construction of a segment of Highway 67 South. The grant application would, the grant applicant, application request would be for the construction of approximately one mile of four-lane divided interstate highway from Butler County Road 360 South to Butler County Road 338. There was a map in your packet that kind of laid out the different segments of the, of the project, and this would be Section 1B on that map. The application request would be for $3,285,961 for MODOT's cost-share grant program and a commitment of $3 million, the same amount, $285,961 in local funding from the half-cent Highway 67 sales tax. This application is due October 7th, so I'm asking to, just to workshop it tonight and build on it on the 5th, so.
Okay, now what was that cost-share amount again?
It's a 50/50.
Oh, okay, okay.
So it's, it's $3,285,961 in a grant request, and that same amount would be, would be our commitment to the Highway 67 tax.
Okay, I got you, thank you. Any further discussion on that item? I think it's wonderful.
Make a motion and move this to the October 5th voting session.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. That will be on the October 5th voting session. Item F, the city council will consider bids for the Barron Road Item F, the city council will consider bids for, for the Barron Road Ball Lane property sale. Now, was that the water tower?
That's where the water tower was at, yes, sir.
Oh, okay, I thought we advertised for bids already.
We did advertise and we've received a bid.
Oh, okay.
This is accepting a bid.
Okay, all right.
So we've received, uh, one bid on that particular piece of property in the amount of $16,000 and my recommendation to the council would be to accept that bid.
A motion, we move it to the voting session, October 5th.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That concludes discussion items. Item nine, action required items. AA, Resolution Number 1932, the city council will take action on a resolution appointing board members on behalf of the Green Forest Community Improvement District.
Motion for the reading of Resolution Number 1932.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
A resolution of the city Papa Bluff, Missouri, making appointments to the Green Forest Community Improvement District Board of Directors.
Motion for adoption. Resolution 1932.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Parsons?
Yes.
Councilman DeGerris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank, thank you, Clerk Young, Resolution Number 1932 is adopted. We have no need for a closed session tonight, uh, I'll hear my motion to adjourn following the city, the city manager's request or report.
I thought you were saying.
Okay.
It's the first time.
Parsons.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Mr. Winters?
I had several things written down, hopefully everybody's still with us for just a few more minutes. Couple of things coming up, Buffett the Bluff is October 10th from 8:00 to 3:00. We have some flyers on the table about what's allowed, what's not allowed, we've shared some stuff on, on, uh, on our Facebook page and I'm working with the newspaper to get, uh, some information to them about, more about the event. Iron Horse Festival is this Saturday, September 26th, from 10:00 to 4:00 downtown. If you haven't been, it's, it's really a neat event, they have lots of food vendors and craft vendors and, um, a variety of activities for the young and old alike. Supposed to be really nice weather this weekend too, I think. This past Thursday, Councilwoman Lisa Parsons held a, a meeting for citizens of her ward. I'd like to thank Ms. Parsons for taking the time to do that. We had a couple of other council people, um, there and also Chief Whitley and his staff that were there to, to, to lead the meeting really about the safety and security issues. Finally, something that was mentioned earlier, I think, um, a few months ago, Steve Halter with the Chamber of Commerce worked to, uh, secure some grant funding from the U.S. Department of Commerce to conduct some different planning sessions for the city. One of them was the downtown plan. I know some of y'all participated and attended the downtown strategies meetings that they had here, a couple of them in the, in the, uh, Coliseum. The, uh, company that did that, they have finished their plan and, and submitted it. Mr. Halter, he shared it on, uh, the Chamber of Commerce's Facebook page, um, last week and we'll be sharing that on our Facebook page and posting it to the city's website as well. It's a, it's a good information, it's a interesting read and they came, like, lots of good information, so that's all I have.
That concludes our regular meet, meeting of the city council. We stand adjourned.